Any of you coming to order, please rise for the pleasure allegiance. Pleasure allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Here.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
The approval of the journal, the meeting of December 6, 2016.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries. We have no bid openings, move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, 4th District.
See file and refer to council, county council is committee to hold, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 6th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, 6th District.
Receive file and refer to the county councillor for review and response.
So ordered.
Item number six, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, 5th District.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, 1st District.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number nine, 4th District.
See file and county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, all districts.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 11.
Receive file and appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries.
Item number 12.
Receive and file, same motion through item number 13, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, 2nd District.
See file and appointment be approved as requested by the county councillor, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries.
Item number 15, 2nd District.
See file and county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Free motion through 18th.
So ordered.
Item number 19, 6th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered. County Executive, special committee reports. St. Louis County Council Committee to Hold Tuesday, November 15, 2016, to consider legislation submitted to the voters in St. Louis County on April 2017 ballot, accounting sales tax of one half of 1 percent to improve police and public safety, Tuesday, November 15, 2016. I move a report of the committee to hold, meeting held Tuesday, November 15, 2016, to consider legislation submitted to voters in St. Louis County on April 7, 2017 ballot. Receive file and adopt it as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, reported as adopted, move to public forum.
We have eight speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please keep your comments to three minutes, state your name and address, please.
First speaker this evening is Gregory Zirker.
Councilmembers and county members, I'm not sure who's all who, anyway, please. My name is Gregory, he is Zirker. I just want to hear some times before you come here and have experience with the development of close development. What I wanted to talk about is, when the proposal first came out, with much more houses than we have now, to maintain the character of the neighborhood, Matt Segal previously touted provision of 30-foot spacing for houses in the political development, which is not unlike the spacing for the existing houses along Schuster Road. At that time, he thought the spacing was 30 feet on existing houses, and then he really revised it on the second plan to believe it was 30 feet on existing houses. But I have documentation that the existing spacing averages 62 feet, and it ranges from 51 feet to 80 feet. And there is one outlier at 35 feet. And I've transmitted this to people before, and page of each.
Pull the microphone.
Oh, this way. Okay, Polte's latest proposal has reduced the spacing down to 16 feet. And I believe this is clearly a bait and switch, which was trying to get snuck in here. I don't know exactly what it is, but the facts speak for themselves. Now, the county code 1003.111-4 is supposed to require a minimum side yard of 15 feet, which equates to 30 feet spacing. And then, there's another code violation in Polte's latest proposal, and that's on the front yard spacing. The front yard spacing in the code is 30 feet, but his latest proposal uses 20 feet. And I'm sure there's some other ones that I've read about, but I don't know, the plan keeps changing all the time, and I haven't seen a copy of the latest drawing. So, I just wanted to put those items in the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dave Skerr.
Good evening again, my name is Dave Skerr. You've seen me here before as well. I don't advocate this Polte development one bit. I don't understand how the planning and zoning, or the council, can make a decision with so few facts put in front of them. All of your decisions are almost built on good faith of a developer and engineer. I've seen flaws in a lot of the designs that they've put on the paper, on the planning documents, and I've detailed those to you all. I've detailed how that, in violation of four county ordinances and some of the PEU codes, I don't, you know, there's nothing we can do about that, you know. I realize that 100 percent of the people that are joining that piece of property signed petitions against it at one time or another, you know, that every house on Schuster Road has a minimum of one acre lot. This does not follow the pattern of Schuster Road one bit, okay? I know that you guys are going to vote on closing this tonight, and I realize that Colleen has reasons to want to push it on, you know. It's been three years of working with you guys on this stuff, but realize that the integrity of this neighborhood is being compromised, and you do not have to follow, you know well now that you don't have to follow her lead, and we would really appreciate it if you didn't, because you can see that this does not follow the plan of the neighborhood. There could be a lot better development on this piece of ground. You know that we care, I just hope that you do as well. I guess, I sometimes wonder if you have to be asleep to still find the American dream and have a neighborhood that has integrity, you know. That was supposed to be a joke. Don't get too excited. I know I don't have much to offer. Another thing I would say is that a vote of yes on this would seem to want to tell me that maybe your reality checks have bounced. No, I didn't get nothing yet.
Sorry.
Okay, well, all I can say is that, you know, maybe as a nation, we should ban shredded cheese, that way we can make our nation great again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Next speaker is Ann Zinniak.
Hello again, you know me. You don't know our neighborhoods, I wish you did. We're a giving neighborhood, we're not takers, and we give to everyone that lives in our community, and pay everything forward. And that's the kind of neighborhood that we've had for 60-plus years. I hope the integrity of our neighborhood doesn't change. My first meeting with Matt regarding Polte left a very bad taste in my mouth, and it's remained ever since, because it was all about money. We don't feel rich because of money, we feel rich for what we feel inside. So I am against this. I do want to thank Colleen for her time and her consideration and her patience, and for Ann, her assistance, they've been great, all of you have been kind to listen to us. I know if I was sitting up there, what I would choose, but, the thing that kind of upsets me, I'm very upset, and it's like, what happens when the majority shows they are against this, and they have good reasons, and that their plaits, that their drawing constantly change, I don't think they follow the PEU rules, and yet they are still going to be given the go-ahead as a developer to come in and change the outlay of all of this land. I do think the land needs to be developed, but I think it needs to be developed with the zoning as one house on one acre, and my mind will never change on that one. And I do have a couple of letters that I was asked to give out to everybody, so I'll do that, but again, Colleen, thank you for your time, makes me sad, but if this is the last, if this is the only thing I have to lose, it's still not as much as a lot of people have had to lose. And one more thing, not on this subject, and you can tell me to shut up, if it's not on this subject, but the police officers, I've gotten to know them pretty well, they're awesome. All of our police officers wake up every morning to protect strangers. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And I would like to see you thank you officer signs on every single government building, in front of every school, in front of every church, in front of every business, and I think we owe our lives literally for them, and I just want to say thank you, every one of you. You're in our hearts, you're in our prayers, and we appreciate it. So, is there anything you could do to get the signs, the thank you officer signs in front of government buildings, or in front of schools, the public schools?
Send something to...
Pardon me?
You can send something to your councilperson or county executive, we can check into it.
Okay, so I would get in touch with you?
Sure, absolutely, you can call 615-5000, and they'll connect you right through.
I'm going to remember.
Send an email, send an email.
I'll have somebody talk to you.
I've got your email address.
Okay, and I can also have somebody talk to you here, on your way out.
Okay, sounds good. Seriously, I really think that...
School districts are separate entities, so...
Pardon me?
The school districts are separate entities from the county, so you have to...
So I can bring it up at a board meeting, no?
Right.
I have a good choice between here tonight, or a school board meeting. I might have picked the wrong place.
Pick the better choice.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Ann.
But just know that I'm against it, okay?
Thanks, Ann.
Next speaker is Patricia Ann Smith.
I've already sent you pictures from Wendy, she was unable to be here tonight because she was, I mean, whether it was a cold, but I'm coming to verify that she did send those pictures to me. They are from her collection of flood pictures she's taken over many years, and she has many more, if you'd like to see more. We wish to request you hold this vote on PC 3516, and that we have a private meeting with you, separate as other people have had for the museum, and I'd also like to request that Executive Stinger also grant us a private audience, if he would please, before he votes for anything like this.
Yeah, I actually don't vote, but I, the council actually makes their votes.
But you have to give executive approval.
At some point, I would either sign or not sign the bill, or have an option to veto.
We would like to meet with you before you sign or not sign, if we could, okay, all right. Not every unperturbed petite parcel of Easted Valley, our pristine peninsula of land, needs to be considered a development parcel, as if it is some tasty tabletop morsel awaiting the scrape and scouring of bulldozer's blade or man's covetous command. Against such practices, we must take a stand and protect these tiny tidbits of topography with a perennial, non-recendable, in perpetuity law proposal. To the former applicable county legislation, we should see a reversal. Rather than by a backhoe's maw, these are better cultured by man's hand. Promote pocket parks and wide environmental buffers botanical, to halt the rain runoff and flooding that has been far too universal. These environmental restorations and reparations should cause rain absorption and dispersal. Our assets, both animal and arboreal, should not be considered candidates for disposal. Red flag for the flood plain, no development allowed. Why would you wish a portion of our populace to enshroud in periodic deadly flood waters that will their futures end or cloud? We don't wish the repetitive flooding of our raging rivers to be rampaging loud, or to have frequent flash flooding through which our cars must be dangerously plowed. Do not be as deceptive as a boat that's double proud, seeming to sail one way while really going another, confusing and betraying your observing citizen crowd. Do not place one position on paper and support another view aloud. We all wish a ship that will not corrode or rust with a captain we can trust, one that will make our fleet proud. Assure you honorably fulfill the political offices to which you've been elected and avowed, and that to mercenary over developers, you have not kowtowed. May we keep all governmental actions on a higher non-criminal level, not lowbrow, with the strength of spirit to confront crass over construction, and the high intellect to interpret proposals, may you be endowed. Not gargantuan and taller, more compact and smaller, not immediately adjacent, more correctly placed and distant, not stripped barren and botanically arrested, rather ecologically landscaped and naturally forested, less foreign invasive species, and more disease-resistant native species, not GMO, not merely concrete and asphalt caverns and canyons that humans contain, rather the U.S. a more environmentally attuned domain. Reconstruction rather than further destruction.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Frank Canetto.
Good evening, my name is Frank Canetto, and I live at 1830 Ridgeview Circle Drive in the 3rd Council District. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Transportation Museum Association. I'd like to thank the council for devoting so much time to this issue and giving it thorough consideration. One thing that's been brought up as a concern is the loss of parklands to county residents, notwithstanding the fact that the transportation museum is just that, a museum, and not really a park. What seems to be lost in this is that after five years of ownership, passing out of the county's hands, the Park Department will have nearly $1 million per year extra in its budget to maintain or acquire new parklands. That's $1 million a year to improve the county park system with no tax increase. As a taxpayer and a voter, I can support that, and I think most people probably can. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Next speaker is Ralph Gerber.
Good evening, my name is Ralph Gerber, I live at 1295 April Hill Lane, and I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of PC 35-16. Basically, I think with an environmental PEU, there needs to be some kind of laws put in place, because that allows you to basically take, like that development R1 zoning, and you're basically mimicking R2 zoning, by grouping all the houses together in one spot. You know, that if you had a worse parcel of ground, you could cram it over even farther, make the lots even smaller, come in with the PEU, build on it, and, you know, I just think that there needs to be some type of regulations for how far you adjust from, from like an R1, maybe like one classification or something, instead of just jumping to whatever you want, because there's no rules in place. It's just like open play, but that's all I got. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ralph.
Next speaker is Charles Taylor.
Mr. Executive, members of the council, my name is Charles Taylor. I live at 423 Woodview Manor Lane. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Museum and Transportation. Again, I'd like also to thank you folks for the time that you've put into it. I can tell you the time that we put into it, and the negotiations, and the efforts to secure a winning transaction for the county, for the museum, and for the people of St. Louis County. I think we've done that, and I urge your vote in favor of the legislation, and thank you again for your time and your obvious devotion and intellectual attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Final speaker, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Introduction to bills.
Bill number 322, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $225,000 from Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the amount of up to $75,000 dollars for support of tuberculosis outreach services program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 323, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Mitchell and Hughes Back Architects Incorporated for architectural services related to construction of a standardized general aviation facility for clearance of international passengers and crews at Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill number 324, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Washington University School of Medicine for patient care services for sexually transmitted infection services, excuse me. Bill number 325, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance, mending ordinance number 26,541, by repealing and reenacting Sections 1 and 4 pertaining to three grants in Missouri Division of Highway Safety for support of personnel and equipment for traffic law enforcement activities at the police department. Bill number 326, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Kianini Architects for professional services related to the new Wash Bay project at Maintenance District Number 1, St. Louis County Public Works Number 16-011-OC. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number 309, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Let's take it up, move for perfection of bill number 309.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 309 is perfected.
Move perfect bill number 310.
I'm sorry, bill number 310, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 310.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 310 is perfected.
Bill number 311, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 311.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 311 is perfected.
Bill number 312, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 312, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and subsequent renewals with Language Access Multicultural People LLC.
Move for adoption of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 312.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 312 is adopted. At this time, I move for perfection of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 312.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 312 is perfected.
Bill number 313, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 313.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 313 is perfected.
Bill number 314, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect bill number 314.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 314 is perfected.
Bill number 315, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 315.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 315 is perfected.
Bill number 316, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect bill number 316.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 316 is perfected.
Bill number 317, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and O'Leary.
I move to perfect bill number 317.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 317 is perfected.
Bill number 318, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect bill number 318.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number 318 is perfected.
Bill number 319, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill 319. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I have a motion carries, bill number 319 is perfected.
Bill number 321, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 320.
321.
What about 320?
We're coming back to it, I think we got a subbill coming down.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I have a motion carries, bill number 321 is perfected.
Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold bill number 116.
So ordered.
Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of bill number 277.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 277, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 277 is finally passed.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 278, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for final passage, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 278.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on substitute bill number 1 for bill number 278, there are seven ayes.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 278 is finally passed.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 279, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for final passage, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 279.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on substitute bill number 1 for bill number 279, there are seven ayes.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 279 is finally passed.
Bill number 280, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for final passage, bill number 280.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 280, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 280 is finally passed.
Bill number 281, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for final passage, bill number 281.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 281, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 281 is finally passed.
Bill number 282, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Like to take it up, move for final passage, bill number 282.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 282, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 282 is finally passed.
Bill number 283, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Take it up, move for final passage, bill number 283.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 283, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 283 is finally passed.
Bill number 284, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 284.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 284, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 284 is finally passed.
Bill number 285, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 285.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 285, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 285 is finally passed.
Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 286.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 287, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 287 is finally passed.
Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 286.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 287, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 287 is finally passed.
Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 287.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 287, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 287 is finally passed.
Bill number 288, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 288.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 288, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 288 is finally passed.
Bill number 289, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 289.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 289, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 289 is finally passed.
Bill number 290, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 290. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 290, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 290 is finally passed.
Bill number 291, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 291.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 287, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 287 is finally passed.
Bill number 291, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for final passage of bill number 291.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.